The regular meeting of City Council of Carersville is now in session, please rise. Rosemary, would you please read the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody please silence their phones, we'll have our invocation by Judy Fitchey. Judy, would you pray for Dave Nutty? Anybody know that Dave Nutty had triple or quadruple bypass writing?
No.
Yes, so does everybody know, alright?
Let's pray together. God, we thank you for the wonders of this day. We thank you that the heavens have declared your works before us as we sat and watched today. We ask now that we see your hand at work in each person here and in the work of this council. We ask especially that you work in a healing way in the life of Dave Nutty this day, that he respond well to the treatment, that he heal quickly, and that you be with his family as they encourage and support him in the days ahead. We ask now that you guide us and protect us as we gather here tonight, that we may do your will for your people. All this we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you ma'am.
Okay, we'll have roll call please.
Councilman Bishop?
Present.
Councilman Nobby?
Here.
Councilwoman McHenry?
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Present.
Councilman Nutty?
Councilwoman Durham?
Present.
Councilman Frank?
Here.
Okay, you have the copies of the last meeting, has there been additions or corrections? If not, I entertain a motion being passed as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to pass the minutes of last meeting as presented. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item A has been polled, so we'll go ahead and go to the Resolution 2017-48. Would you like to explain that?
Resolution 2017-48 is a check in an amount of $400 to be reimbursed into the police telephone.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to accept Resolution 2017-48.
Second.
See, we have a motion and a second to pass it. Resolution 2017-48 for $400, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item C, Rosemary?
It's pending ordinance 3356, it's a request to transfer $2,000 from cable TV electricity to cable TV part-time.
What does that mean?
We're just moving money around in the cable TV budget from electricity to the part-time appropriation.
We have enough through the end of the year, John.
So you have a part-time helper, that's why, is that what that's saying? I think, I didn't either.
We have a part-time category, what we did this summer, the board approved the addition of a summer intern, which is what we hired, so actually increased overall costs a little bit. So this increase is to cover us through the end of the year so that we can cover sports production and things of that nature.
That's fine, thank you sir.
And yeah, we have, we have plenty left there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My number is 3356.
Can we have a motion and a second? Pass pending ordinance 3356 on first reading, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, is there a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay.
Part-time.
Oh, okay, need a motion to pass for third and final reading?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, D, pending ordinance 3357, this is, we're gonna have a public hearing also, so Rosemary, would you like to explain that one?
It's the first aid, and they are looking to, they're asking for additional to, for the EMT drivers, 55,000 overtime, 19,000 social security, 12,000 gasoline, 14,000 medical supplies, 22,000. When we did the budget last year for this year, a couple things we did not anticipate, well, I think the raise was part of the EMT drivers being low, I don't think that it was a big raise. Gasoline, we're making more runs, medical supplies, additional expenses there because we're making more runs.
Is the overtime Rosemary probably generated from shortage of people or just vacations and what have you, probably? That's alright, don't look, I'll find out, I don't want to pull up a needle.
Dale? Questions?
Perfect timing Dale, perfect timing.
You got your question and answer book ready?
Not really, but you need.
We just read your, the pending ordinance 3357, Mike Bishop just asked if the overtime was due to lack of drivers or what is causing the overtime?
Both, lack of drivers and people on vacation and sick days and...
How many are short, how many drivers are short?
Actually, right now, we're, since we just hired the last one here a couple weeks ago, that brought us back up to our staffing, but with the number of transfers that we're doing, we can actually use a couple more, because, well, like right now, our truck's on its, well, it's on its way back from Kokomo, so, but we've got trucks, we put, well, 14,000 more miles on it this, in the first six months than we did last year. So our run numbers are going up, we're just, we're running out of people. But, so to answer your question, it's both ways, it's not enough people at times, and in the vacations, the sick days, and the time off is the other side of it.
How many people do you have now Dale?
I got 20 full-time and I believe it's eight part-time.
Okay, thank you.
Dale, are we running higher this year than what we originally planned, cost-wise? I think we're right, right about where I think we should be. So last year, I was trying to think, I didn't, I couldn't find the number, and Rosemary and I were talking, what was our city share and county share last year? I was thinking it was around 170, 180? That's what we estimated for this year. Wasn't about that last year? I don't think I've got that with me, hang on a second. Because I thought it was like 300 total last year, I think it might even be less than that. Yeah, I don't have that with me.
A little higher?
I think it's a little higher, a little higher than that. How much was it? I don't remember off the top of my head. Was it over 200?
I think it was.
Like 255?
I was thinking a little over 200, I don't know how much.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it was over 255 because that's what we normally were spending. Yeah, I don't want to say because I don't have it with me. I don't have the last year's budget with me, or report. We brought in last year 1,202,618, but I don't have an expense on this sheet with me. What was that number again?
How well is Medicare and what have you, the bill, getting the bills paid? Are they keeping pretty well current, because I see there's a pretty good spread between their expenses and receipts?
They're keeping, they're in the running, but it's just, it's the money coming back from the insurance from Medicare, Medicaid, and the insurances are just running slow. I'm sorry? They're running slow, why, I can't answer that, but if you, I think it's, we're down a couple, I've got too many papers.
We're down about a little 200 grand right now.
But if you figure that back out, we're running about 60,000 ahead of where we were this time last year.
Yeah, but you got five more people too.
Yes, well, we had five last year.
Well, that's right, they went in.
They went in in December. Do you have your report from you that you gave us? I got today's. Yeah, if you look on the backside there, it says 2016 EMS profit loss, last year was negative 244,000, is that total or was that? That's total, right. So then our, so then our share would have been 120 something?
I think it's, this is, was our share.
Yeah. Got the way.
Share.
That 15 was just a little over 600, so.
Is this correct, that we've only received maybe $84,000 from Medicare so far this year?
That is the Medicare reimbursements.
Oh, that's the ones that they're paying back?
Yes.
Those two, okay, okay, that's, so does it show anywhere here where we are as far as what we're collecting or what, maybe I just missed it?
Our total receipts is what we collect.
Right.
As of the end of July, you've brought back in 725,270.
Okay, so that's, that's not what's billed, that's what we've brought in?
That is what is received.
Billed out was 1,795,990.
So we've got a million outstanding for this year?
Yeah, that's not on that sheet, that's just...
So we have a million outstanding for this year?
We have 300,000 outstanding.
You what?
We have 300,000, because 700,000 will be paid. Yeah, 700,000.
Well, you said million seven, million seven, didn't you?
You got a million seven, so yeah, you're gonna be right out of millions.
We're gonna be a million out still, yeah.
Is much of that Medicare because they're so slow to pay?
I, I don't want to say that, but that's the biggest run of our people is Medicare and Medicaid.
But when you're talking what you're billing, you don't get back what you bill.
If the trend carries, we're probably only gonna get about 70% of that back.
Right now, we're running, right now, I think it's like 40, 41% back, the normal is about 33%, so we are above our normal.
Hey, Rosemary, on the back of that sheet, we've got 2017, we've got 2016, 15, 14, on the profit and loss, is that what the, when you divide that too, that's the count?
No, this is, this is city.
That's just city.
That is just city, so the counting should have been the same amount.
So then Dale, just help me out, because we've been here for a while, we used to be about half a million a year, around there, for the service, correct? In the last year, we're down to about a quarter, so there's a significant change there.
I'm just concerned because, you know, the return, well, that's like you said, 33%, that's a lot of money that we're gonna leave, there's nothing we can do about it, I mean, it's out of our control.
But that is also, like a wording, that is the going rate, I mean, you don't want to hear that, but that's, we're on the top end of our returning, but some of the other ambulance companies I've talked to, we're on, we're on the high end of what we're getting back.
Really?
So our, I feel our billing company is doing a pretty good job at it, it's just people won't pay.
But all billing is slow though, I mean, when you get billed from the hospital and it's slow, I mean, and then your, your insurance is even slower and...
Yeah, we'll still, we get payments from a year or so ago, the run was made, and we're still getting those checks now.
How long can we go back Dale to collect, do you know?
Two years.
Two years, I think it is.
How's that, you don't really get much.
Yeah.
So Dale, would you say that right now our run volume's up and do you have a percentage of that? It appears to be up. Yeah, we, well, we just turned 3,028 runs just a few minutes ago. 3,028?
So this shows you the monthly ranking.
On the second page, you've got the monthly run numbers. And what were we running at prior? We finished 15, if I remember right, we finished up at like 2,700 rounds, if I remember right. Yes.
That's all I got.
And with this new program at the hospital starting, I feel our run numbers are gonna pick up even more with that. Which programs then? The rehab center they're putting together.
They've got a 46-bed facility now going into Bay of Memorial, it's gonna be detox and HIV and Hep C type patients.
I got a feeling that's gonna make the situation a lot worse.
It's gonna be interesting.
What role would you play in that?
Well, I don't know 100% sure, but back in probably March, we talked with Randy a little bit, and he was telling me if this went through, there will be some, he was calling them long transfer, long haul transfers that could come in here, and I don't exactly know for sure what all he's anticipating, but he also told me that it would make our run volume go up considerably, or could.
So we, do we go someplace else and get people in urgent, or don't we just go out?
Both ways, both. You could go out and get them and bring them back, and then you can take them from here to another agency.
Facility.
Yep. They treat them so long here and then move them onto a higher one or vice versa.
Yeah, this, this center at the hospital is gonna create over 100 more jobs for the hospitals.
When's that effective?
18, mid-18 I believe it is.
Okay, is there any more questions for Dale? If not, I'll open it up to the public for a, for a public hearing, you got anything you want to say?
No, I'm just looking at numbers, and when you look at the profit and loss, it's not quite, it's profit and loss to what the spend was, but if you look at the budget, those numbers can be a little misleading if you're not looking at it correctly, because in 2015, the actual spend was 1.14, and 2016, the actual spend was 1.78, so there's quite a difference. So if your profit and loss is about a wash, we really haven't gained anywhere, maybe a little bit, but if you look at profit and loss, it looks like that number's coming down, but we're spending more to get that number, is my point, so we may not...
Well, we always knew that was gonna be the case, when we took on the transfer, we knew we wanted to spend more.
Exactly.
But the idea was to shorten that subsidy, and it looks like it's worked, I mean, I don't know where our numbers are, where do you feel, do you feel like you could estimate this year where the subsidy would be? Because basically, we're subsidized in 911, I mean, I mean, can you get a ballpark? Let me stew on it a minute. I would say about 275, 300. So these numbers only go back to 14, and I'll tell you guys prior to that, and Connie can tell you, and Debbie probably can as well, prior to that, we were around about a half a million, because I can't remember if it was 250 or 125 that we were paying, I got those flipped around, but we were paying about half a million, so if we get down to two, what'd you say, 275, that's still substantially less than what we were paying prior. Now, I think that calls a problem accounting. Right. But that's still significantly less than what we're paying.
Okay, is there any more questions for Dale? If not, I'll open it up to the public, so I'm gonna close the meeting, open it up to the public, anybody got anything they'd like to speak towards this?
I just have a couple.
I hope you come up.
Yeah, come up, come up here please.
I'm Gary Naylor, county commissioner, for those of you who don't know me, the only thing that concerns me is our budget and the way we're situated, last year, we were told, or the council and the commissioners of last year, which I wasn't part of, was told that we needed to budget 180,000 for this year's budget. We were able to encumber some from the year before, that took us somewhere in the neighborhood of 230,000 that we actually had to spend. This month, that line item was exhausted, and we was not able to meet our obligation for this month's claim by the clerk treasurer's office, and if you look at what we have spent thus far for the year, and took that by, averaged it by the month, and carried it out to the rest of the year, we're looking at 270, somewhere in the neighborhood of needing 276,000 to make the end, make our reimbursement to the city needs, that's without any additionals.
Let me just state the reason why they're a little higher going than we are currently right now is they pay a month behind, and December of last year was higher than average, and that's why it took them down lower faster.
Okay, but we, I mean, we'll be based on a 12-month?
Right, and I was just explaining why your numbers don't match the ones that we have right here, and why you had ran out of money before.
I mean, that's a 53, a little over 53% increase if it, if it pans out the rest of the year. Dale, the other day, asked the council for next year's budget to look at 260,000, needs for 260,000. If, if you look at the same, if we run over again next year, the same percentage that we're currently running over now, that takes us almost up to 400,000 a need for. I'm, I understand we're making more runs, and, and I understand that we're collecting quite well, and I applaud our collection agency that's getting those, because we are over the average of most services, however, I'm concerned at what it's costing us to get that revenue for. And I'm just concerned that in three years, three years' time, we may be right back where we was.
And we always knew that was a possibility.
So I just, I mean, it's the city's obligation to administrate and run the ambulance as they see fit, I just would encourage us to maybe take a look, a step back and, and look at where we're heading and where we're going, if, if, if we continue at the same direction that we're going.
How much short were you guys this month?
Um, it was around 19,000? Something like that, I think, was the per cent every thousand.
And then you'll be short the rest of the year?
Yeah, yeah, because we, we don't have the capabilities for additional appropriations.
This is like, we're not close to being enough, if that's the case.
So, that, and that concerns me, so.
I'd like to point out something, I think that we all did this with anticipation of trying to gain some revenue and to help a department bring in some money, but I think, what, in the last two years, we've got, the other portion of that department that runs EMS doesn't bring in any money, and in the last two years, you've probably had, what, how much percentage increase in just the overdoses, just the overdose runs? I mean, nobody's ever mentioned that, I'm gonna bring it up.
And from January to July of last year, I believe it was, we used, well, let me tell you, hang on a second, I believe it was like 56 doses of Narcan. I can't find my paper.
And now we're at 160, 110 doses now.
Just that, just that situation alone, besides the others that you don't ever get paid for. I mean, that, that's an increase, and no one's ever mentioned that, and that would have happened whether or not we were in a position that we tried to spend more money to get more money.
And that'd probably lead to a higher cost.
And that would have just, we would have had to pay for that, we'd have been, we'd have been paying a little bit more, but yet not bringing in anything, had we not started this.
Most of the time on the, when we use Narcan, most of the time, we don't get reimbursed for it, because there's nothing there to get reimbursed from, and so we're basically, we're eating that, we have worked an agreement with the prosecutor, we do have a little bit of an avenue now to recoup at least the cost of the Narcan out of that, if at all, goes through on the steps that it's set up to.
With the trend keeps going, it's only gonna get worse instead of better.
I hope not.
Okay, are there any more questions from the public? I'll go ahead and close the public meeting and turn it back over to the council, whatever you want to do on this.
Will this get you to the year, you think?
No. What was the question, I'm sorry?
We'll get to the year. From, yeah, I don't... From what you can tell now, I mean, I feel like it will.
Even with the county not getting...
Well, the county, you're like...
Well, these are, these are, this is additional appropriations for, this is additional for our appropriations that we pay out, regardless if they've paid us any money or not.
Yeah, because that's not very new factored in.
I'm looking at the big picture. Where would this money come from, Rosemary?
Out of general fund.
How much is in the general right now?
I feel like if you don't pass this, you're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and say what we're gonna do, we're gonna say yes, we're gonna say no, what are we gonna do, stop?
By law, the county has to provide.
Well, yeah, we have to do that.
I mean, it's plain and simple.
But they don't have to provide to the extent that we are.
They don't have to transfer.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
As of August 10th, the general fund was 3,199,940 and 6 cents.
Three what, I'm sorry, three million?
3,199,000.
And we have two more additional appropriations coming up, general two.
Okay, so what, is there any more discussion on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to pass along first reading.
Yeah, I do have one. Rosemary, as clerk treasurer, in your professional opinion, do you think this will be okay and not damage the general fund?
When I went through this with Dale, end of last month, this should cover us through the end of the year. Now, what happened in the last four weeks, I have not went back in to look to see if this will cover us through the end, end of the year, but you look at the appropriation report now, and your overtime is already negative, your medical supplies are already negative, your gasoline is already negative.
And then will we have enough, do you think, covered, come out of the general fund to pay the rest of the year?
I will tell you, with all three of these additional appropriations that were passed, and going through 2018 budget, we are funded. I would have to look and see what kind of money we are not gonna get from county, the county, to see how that would impact us, but I mean, I cannot tell you that right now off the top of my head.
Is there any possible, excuse me, sorry?
No, I'm just gonna say, well, I think we, being in the negative this much, I think we probably have to do this, but then another decision needs to be made on where's the other half coming from for the rest of the year.
Is there any of these areas, Dale, where you think you could cut any of these, this money that you requested?
I don't believe so. Yeah, because you cut the transfers, then you cut your revenue strength, don't you?
I understand that.
Is there anything, any place that you can transfer any of this money from?
We've already transferred stuff around, trying to keep everything covered.
Another thing we looked at at the same time, and if you look at the resolutions that we did the last round of meetings, we did quite a few transfers.
Which was what you requested a few weeks ago, so that's already been done?
That was being done regardless.
I'm talking about their request.
No, I mean, it's...
Dale, this may take some paperwork for you, and I don't know if you have time to do it or not, you guys are busy I'm sure, is there any way to kind of give, give us an idea of what it would cost with the transfer program and without the transfer program? Because, you know, the bottom line is, we want to save, we want to reduce the subsidy as much as possible, and I think everybody under... And I think everybody understands that. I mean, if it costs us, it doesn't really matter how much it costs, but reduce the subsidy overall, we're paying less overall, if that makes sense. I think what would help people might, is to see that difference. You know, is the ODs, as we're talking about, is that really shooting our 911 calls up? And our revenue stream from transfers kind of mitigating some of that cost? I'm sure it is, but I just wanna, if it was black and white, I think it might be, I don't know if you can do that, or?
I think so, it'd, it'd take some time, but I think we can.
We went into this, if I remember right, that transfers were gonna be a money maker for us, right? To a certain extent.
After, if you, if you remember, he also told us that we had to be over 4,000 paying runs to be a break-even point. And we're not to the 4,000 runs, paying runs.
Well, we never thought we'd break even. I mean, I don't think anybody thought we'd be break even.
But that's, that's what it's, that's kind of how he, he was working from that point was to make it a, for your words, money maker, we had to be over 4,000 paying runs. And we're not there.
No, but we're, we went from 500,000 almost annually for a decade or more. I mean, you were on there, and I think it was 500,000 forever, and then we're down to 244 last year.
'Cause I even think they talked about, if we could lower it 100,000, that's, that's a savings.
Yeah, and we dropped it, yeah, I mean, even if it could go to 300 this year, that's still 200 less than it had been for decades prior, you know?
If we continue at the run rate that we're at now, we should be at 4,000 or over by the end of the year.
Well, if that's paid runs.
Paid, well, that's true, that's true.
We're right around, I believe it's around 3,500 paying runs right now, I'll say, not paying, build-out runs. Is, I think it's right around 3,500 now.
And like Dale said, a lot of them, it's people that had runs last year could be paying this year.
Well, this, what, this 2744, isn't that the number of runs so far this year?
That's the number of billed runs.
Well, no, through July, yes.
Through July?
Yes, and he had given us the number that he just now turned over today.
Oh, I got you, okay, I got you, okay.
Okay, is there any more discussion? There's no more discussion, I could take, take a motion.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Do we have a motion in a second? Is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor, simply saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have six ayes and one no.
I was aye.
Okay, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules, we'll do a real call vote, please.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes.
Councilman Navi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Yes.
Councilwoman Durham?
Yes.
Councilman Frank?
No.
Okay, pass it on first reading only, it'll be come up next meeting.
Thank you, Dale.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dale.
Okay. Okay, go on to pending ordinance 3358. Overtime, minor equipment.
This is the pending ordinance for the fire. We're asking for $20,000 out of the overtime appropriation and $26,850 for the minor equipment, and this is also general fund.
Okay.
What's the minor equipment, Troy, please?
It's the radios we talked about last meeting.
How many do you mind?
Clark, you want a filament on that part?
You got enough of these, right?
Yeah. Hands don't wanna work today, I'm sorry.
There'll be 30 radios altogether, maybe one for each firefighter. Uh, one for each firefighter, one for the chief, and two spares.
I'm sorry, would you?
Be 30 radios, already told.
And how long do our radios usually last?
The ones we've got, we've had for between 12 and 15 years. We've had really good service out of them, but they're getting to the point now where parts are becoming unavailable, and, well, in the next two years, you won't be able to get any parts for them, so we're gonna have to do something pretty quick. We're having, starting to have some minor problems with them now. Excuse me, and to put the money into them is almost moot. They're pretty much worthless as far as the trade-in value. They still have somewhat of a minor value to them that we can get out of them to get rid of our old ones. If we wait much any longer, I can see that value going to zero really fast, so.
And we'd like to get rid of them while we can still sell them.
Yeah, while we can still get a little bit.
Show them why.
Aren't you gonna have a problem, like, down the road, if we don't stagger it a little bit? And if you get maybe half and half or whatever, 'cause you're gonna end up a few years down the, whenever, to have a whole load to replace again, can we kind of?
15 years, the ones you have now, it's been 15 years, so.
Well, that's the problem, we probably should've.
Yeah, we should've went sooner on these.
Sooner, than, than, than.
These were bought with a grant 15 years ago, the last ones were. So, that's why, that's why they're all to the point of being.
Not half of them all.
They're all of them ready to go now, doesn't have a problem.
We've been trying to get grants and haven't had any luck with that.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, we've, we've applied for grants for radios the last four years, five years, and we haven't had any luck, yeah.
And these new ones can be either analog or?
They're analog and digital, uh, they'll do every digital capable right now, so they're state-of-the-art radios, yes.
So they'll move to that, what was it, 800?
They won't do 800.
Okay.
They're, they're VHF.
Was this not something, want a Riverboat, on said general fund? Since it's equipment? I'm just asking the question.
I think we was asking Riverboat.
I thought we was asking for Riverboat, too.
We did the tools on the, the new Jaws Alive out of Riverboat.
Right, we did. I thought we asked for these, I'm just, I'm asking the question, can they not come out of Riverboat fund?
They could.
I would almost rather see them out of Riverboat than out of general fund right there, just in case. That would free up a little more money for EMS or something at this point, is my kind of contention with that.
I do have a question on overtime. I do have a question on overtime. And you've kind of explained to me before, but I'm not real smart, so I need help with this one.
Come on, Mark, stand there.
EMS and fire are the same ships essentially, right?
Yeah, but under the Fair Labor Standards Act, the EMS are civilians, they go off of 40. If you look in our contract, it, it breaks it down by the federal law, section K of the Fair Labor Standards Act.
I, I get that, but you could offer, I did a little research, you offer a Kelly Day.
Yeah, a lot of departments right now are fighting to get the Kelly Day back, the cities are, because a Kelly Day, our cost for a Kelly Day, you'd be giving a guy a day off. For the youngest guys, it costs you $51, the oldest guys cost you $80. So if you wanna give a guy a $300 to $400 a day off for a $50 cost or a $400, or $80 cost, that would be up to you in your next negotiation. There's 17 pay cycles in that 21-day period. Shelbyville is fighting with them, with their union right now, wanting to take back their Kelly Days because it's just more profitable to have them in there. That's how you, that's why you see a lot of departments run in different ways.
Okay, I think I got lost.
Yeah, I did.
You went, you went home on this number real fast.
And you were talking about.
Okay.
Civilian EMS, they get paid like, like a, a factory job. You get paid overtime after 40, or 46 on some, some ways. Where ours works is the section here, I think it's 15-3. We don't get no overtime unless we work, in a 21-day period, we have to work every day in that seven duty days, seven straight 24-hour days. We get, we're entitled to nine days of halftime. Okay? So that means we work all of them, that's where your benefit is, having sworn firefighters. That's why you'll see all your, a lot of your departments took on EMS. It's more, you don't have Kelly Days. A lot of departments don't run Kelly Days anymore because it's such a great cost to them. The Kelly Day, you can, you can pay a guy that nine hours of halftime, $51, or you can give him a day off. A 21-day, a 24-hour pay period for a guy at $15 an hour or $14 an hour is a lot more than $51 or $80.
Eighty-nine hours of overtime.
Halftime.
Or regular time. So a lot of departments are, are taking, are trying to get their Kelly Days back that they've given to them.
So you're saying the Kelly Day costs $300 as opposed to the $51?
Yeah. It's a, it's a great cost.
And then you said for?
It's a great cost, that's where it's a great, more of a savings to, to municipality to not have a Kelly Day cycle. So we have, we have a, a department that runs?
We have Kelly Days at one time. Every 10 days, they would give a Kelly Day.
Yeah.
So, older guys make more because the longevity and all that.
Longevity is the more, the more pay cycle.
And then the younger guys would be less, so we're paying them significantly less by using the fair labor standards?
Well, just because of the way they're paid, the longevity, they're on a tier-two system.
And what you said the difference was, and you said you had a difference, for like 81 and 54 or something?
Yeah, the lower, the lower they are, the less pay they make. And it's all added up to them. When you figure it out, their pay that goes with all their specialty pays, all their, their tier-two, all their, all their pay cycle goes into the pay. Which it pretty much, it pretty much tells you that right here, how you figure it. This comes right out of the Fair Labor Standards, right into the contract.
So let's say at first, your guy, brand-new, he's costing us for the FSLA, it's costing us about 50?
Well, $51, $52 for nine hours of halftime.
Okay, and then, top guy?
Top guy is probably 84.
84. And then if we go to Kelly Days, what's that gonna cost us?
The low guys probably, if you give him, if you give him a day off. Now, see, there's where you get your problem, because now you run into the chance of having overtime.
So they get a day off, and we have overtime.
Yeah.
So we're giving him, what, what'd he say it was, 2?
$300 or $400, didn't you say?
Well, you're giving him a day off, and then, instead of giving him that $51, you're giving him an extra day off a month.
So that cost us what, per day?
They don't cost you nothing.
But you have to replace.
But we have to replace it first, well, maybe.
So you have, you need a, you need a, you need more firefighters then, 'cause you're running more days off.
Well, don't we have, don't we have extra guys on shift at, at time?
Not that many.
How many times we run extra guys on shift?
I don't.
I mean, from the minimums?
I, I don't have it, and I can tell you, I'd have to, I'd have to, but it isn't as much as you would think. The time, the time the guys get their vacations in and everything, it's, it's not as much as you would think.
Yeah, 'cause it's like, what, six, sixes minimum, is that right?
Yeah, sixes a minimum.
If you can get that number, that'd be fantastic, I'd love to see that.
Yeah, I'll get it for you next meeting, or I can call you.
That'd be fantastic. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, you would have to have, you would have to have a lot more guys to be able to staff at. And a lot of departments have went to where they, they've said, hey, this isn't, this isn't working for us. So they're trying to take it back.
Gabe, you've got nine guys on the shift right now. At Kelly Day, everybody gets one day a month off.
Yeah, so it's an extra day.
Basically, you're losing, you're losing a firefighter every day of the month.
Yeah, so you're, you're cutting down service, you're cutting, you know, and then throw vacations in on top of that.
It's basically a D-shift.
Basically, it's, you're taking a guy away every day.
And actually, by law, it's, it's, it's one day per cycle, and there's 17 cycles. So that's 17 more days per firefighter. So, but a lot of the departments that went to Kelly Days, they had their pay cycle set up at 28-day cycles instead of 21-day cycles, which ours is set up at 21-day cycles. So the most, the most economical way for the municipality is to pay the halftime, FLSA cycle.
I follow that part.
And have the fewest firefighters. But with civilian EMS, no, it's not. It's Kelly Days. Because they're, they're, they're civilians, they get paid on a 40. The most economical way for them is the day off, by far.
Okay, I follow you.
'Cause it's, 'cause it's two different, it's two different ways, because.
The only thing I was thinking, if we're running eight guys on a shift?
Yeah, if we, if we, now, if we had, if we had.
Then that would make sense, to run the.
Yeah, if we had a lot more guys, then it would maybe work, but not with, what, with nine, we'd have to have a lot more.
Okay, is there any more questions for Troy? If not, I'll close this and open it up to the public. Anybody from the public, anything to say about this transfer, I mean, additionals? Anyone? Okay, if not, I'll close the public hearing and go back to you. So what, what is your pleasure on pending order 3358?
I would like to see the minor equipment out of Riverboat Fund, and then that money could be used to free up some of the EMS stuff, however that works.
So you wanna make a motion to?
Table this and change it to?
No, you don't need to table it, 'cause it's already advertised. You just make the, fire overtime 20,000 and minor equipment zero, and then I can advertise from Riverboat 26,000.
I'm good with that.
Okay, we have a motion on that, is there a second?
I'll start.
Okay, all, all to take 244, minor equipment is zero, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So that appropriation is zero.
Are we getting the negative on the overtime?
A little bit, 1,500, I think.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and pass the pending order 3358 on first reading as amended. Any more discussion? Okay, need a motion in a second?
Suspend the rules?
Submit.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, simply saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, go ahead and suspend the rules on pending order 3358. On the, on the amended order 3358.
My commission.
I'm sorry. Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor, simply saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll move to third and final reading, is there a motion in a second to pass amended pending order 3358 for 20,000? And a motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, simply saying aye? All opposed? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Troy. Thanks, Troy.
Okay. Okay, on pending order 3359. Additional appropriation for overtime in the police department. Okay, Carol?
25,000.
Rosemary?
Um, we're just asking for additional appropriation for $25,000. As I explained, the second meeting in June, when we went through the last additional appropriation, we were going into the heavy vacation months, and we have, we did approve the $15,000, and then we also did a transfer of $10,000. And after the last payroll, we are already negative $3,300, almost $3,400.
Carol, I have a question for you, I've been digging in that contract, and I think we might've messed up too big. I can't remember exactly what line, I think it's line seven, I can't remember the exact wording of the contract, and overtime, but it's something like that, or maybe it's, maybe it's vacation, about the date at which police officers have to have their vacation in. Can you tell me how that works exactly, because that's worded very, very vaguely, and I think that's causing you tremendous amounts of problems if, if, I'm thinking.
First round of, vacations have to be posted by April 1st.
And what, and? When that, when you say posted, what does that mean?
In Robbie's office, there's a board, and then it goes by seniority. So three people have them, the top two officers by seniority will get that vacation. From there, officers come put their vacations down by seniority after that.
So let me just, let me clarify, so I can, I'm a visual person, so like, let's say there's three guys on shift three. So, let me just, let me clarify, so I can, I'm a visual person. So, like, let's say there's three guys on shift three, and they, the two of them are two of the top guys in the police department, and they both put in vacation the same week of August. If it's in before April, that date or whatever, they can get that according to the contract.
And then the third person cannot.
Yeah, so basically what it's doing is creating horrible issues with overtime, if I, if I'm reading that right. Does that make sense, or?
Yes.
Technically, two people could be off on the same shift.
We just have a lot of people, or a lot of officers that are on max for vacations.
So, then.
Keep in mind, we did have a retirement on Friday, Captain Clarence Warner, who had thirty-eight years on. You know, save, by the end of the year, we'll save twenty-four hundred dollars in longevity for him. And, um, that's, that's one officer that had seven weeks vacation that the new officer hiring will not.
And, and how many do you have right now?
Officers.
The ones that have hit seven weeks?
Oh, uh, fourteen.
Seventeen, wasn't it?
It was, I think it was sixteen, and I think two now has retired.
So, around fourteen.
We're now at fourteen. So, that's ninety-eight weeks vacation. There was seventeen.
We have, it's down to eighteen, I believe, because Pocono's retired.
Okay, if you, if you say those have to be posted by April, now, can they post, do they post clear up to the next March of the next year, or is, are there no vacations taken in January, February, or March?
No.
No, they can take them. But, but you can take them before that, yeah. That's just the deadline to have them in to secure the vacation.
For the rest of the year.
Yeah, we have some vacations before that.
So, if I understand it right, if you, if you got all the shifts, let's pick one, two, and three, or four, the top two guys could take off Christmas the whole week. And there's nothing you can do about it according to the contract.
That's correct.
That's what I thought. So, it's creating you all kinds of problems.
I don't know how you would, I, I don't, you know, you're still gonna have those weeks vacation for eighteen officers, so. It's just a lot of vacation.
I think that would help that. I don't know. I've been thinking about that one a lot, though.
With this appropriation, twenty-five thousand, well, I can just figure, we're right at fifty thousand already. This would be, make it seventy-five thousand dollars in overtime for the year.
And then again, with overtime, people of higher seniority can pick that up first, right? So, if they're picking it up, and then we're paying more in overtime because they have higher seniority, they make more.
Right, they make more money.
Then the lower.
Just in longevity, yeah, they do.
Well, that works, and the higher seniority always gets the overtime if they want it. I mean, that's, that's an old.
Now, is it, is it every time, or do you go on a list?
It's seniority every time.
So, it's not like?
By supervisor or patrol, so if it's a patrol officer we need, then.
Yeah, so it's not like a guy that's, uh, seniority, and he takes it this week, next week, the other guy bumps up.
I will tell you that Captain Bolos works really hard every day to feel, to fill any scheduled overtime with part-time. And we do the best we can.
Is there a language, Carol, and I can't remember how many hours a day they can work? Like sixteen hours, or are they allowed to work?
Sixteen is the, I, I think that's, you know, I'm not sure. I wouldn't allow more than sixteen, but I don't know if that's federal.
I don't know if it's in the language or not, I can't remember.
Sixteen's plenty.
I would think it'd be very difficult to have part-time police. I think it'd be hard to find.
It is hard to find, we're down to right now, and I, I have no applications.
Don't they typically come from the sheriff's department?
Pardon?
Don't they typically come from the sheriff's department or?
Which is great for us. Yeah.
I think they're in the same soup. We're in, oh, at the sheriff's department. I think they're a little bit too short.
We're one short now. I was at Friday. Um, I do want to mention that we had an officer, and he was a grandson, so.
Yeah, I heard that.
Funeral leave, and he was gracious enough to come into work today because he did not want to cause overtime, because he doesn't know when the arrangements are gonna be. So, we appreciate that. He certainly did not have to do that.
I very much wish that. Yeah, I heard about that earlier.
And then we had an officer off four duty days on administrative leave after an officer-involved shooting. And that's, you know, we have to take care of the investigation.
That's mandatory, anyway.
It is not mandatory. It is, it is mandatory initially, but then length of time is not set. It just takes that moment to get, get the things done that we have to get done.
Okay, is there any more questions for Carol? If not, I'll close the meeting and open up our public hearing. Does anyone from the public have anything to say to this? Is anyone? If not, I'll close, I'll close the public hearing, go back to the council, and ask for, what's your wishes? This is Fundable Rosemary.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to pass pending orders thirty-three fifty-nine.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second to pass pending orders thirty-three fifty-nine on first reading, the amount of overtime for twenty-five thousand dollars? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
We're gonna close it. Oh, yes, we do, nevermind. I'm waiting, no, it's nevermind. I was waiting for the call, the whole call to close.
Do you have a motion in a second to suspend the rules?
You need some water.
Yeah, I think so. I don't think water would do it.
There's been a motion to suspend the rules. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, we'll move on to third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Submit.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second to pass it on third and final reading for the amount of, uh, amount requested of twenty-five thousand dollars? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass.
Thank you.
We do have twenty-five hundred dollars, two thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars coming back out of the U.T.
I'd like to, if you could, pass my notice on to Mr. Rockwell. Hey, Carol, don't we have grant money coming back, too?
I'm sorry, say again.
Don't we have some grant money coming back as long as I already paid up?
What kind of grant money?
For the last operation, I call it Operation.
Two thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars.
That's what that is.
That's what it is.
It should be in, maybe in the next ten days.
And then, do we get any from fees from that, as long as all that go?
Is this split with sheriff's department?
The, for citations.
The, yeah.
It's negative for it.
It's very minimal what we get in for costs.
Arm reverting trade.
If you put a city court.
Correct, yeah.
And I know, but I just didn't know if we got anything back, might as well. My wife needs to contribute to that.
It's very.
We appreciate her donation.
Yes, we do.
Lesson learned, seatbelt under the arm is not good. And they were right. I mean, it's gotta go above the shore.
Okay.
Lesson learned, I didn't know that.
Pending ordinance thirty-three sixty is a request for transfer within MBH, seven thousand dollars going from two thirty-six other materials to three sixty-five other contractual.
Okay, that's thirty-three sixty on first reading.
Do you have a motion? Do you need a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second to pass pending orders thirty-three sixty on first reading to transfer seven thousand dollars?
I have a question first. Why would you transfer that money?
I'd like to ask that question, too. What is it?
Do you remember what it was, Daryl?
Not right off the top of my head, no. That's why I gave Rosemary a big buck.
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look and see what kind of claims we have coming in.
So, what typically comes out of materials? Other materials?
Paving, paint.
Yeah. And then other contractual typically?
And who we pay to do some things.
Outside work.
Outside work.
Is that outside contract, Rosemary?
Yes, other contractual thing that.
Does it put across?
Yes, that's what it is.
You got the transfer station?
Yeah. And the. The city share of paving, the railroad tracks at the transfer station, two thousand came out of, um, the landfill budget. And ten thousand came out of my budget, and the other is seven thousand out of MBH.
Okay.
Because they are gonna start watching the MBH materials, um, what is used for construction, reconstruction of paving roads and streets, so.
They need state mandate.
We need to make sure if it's being paid, it's being paid out of the right, um, appropriations.
Thank you, Rosemary.
So, this is really even more complicated from an unallocated other materials to an allocated other contractual.
It is.
Okay, we already have a motion in a second?
Um, suspend the rules?
Not yet, no, not yet.
Yeah, it's for first reading.
Okay, pass on, so we'll go ahead and, and all in favor, pass it on first reading, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll go on now. Is there a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final?
Submit, second.
Do you have a motion in a second to go to suspend the rules and go third and final? Is there any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we have a motion to go to third and final?
Submit.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second to go third and final to transfer seven thousand dollars from materials to contractual? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, is there any old business come before the council tonight?
Congratulations, Spartans, on the big win against the Spartans, man. Outstanding men.
First time since nineteen thirty, I mentioned.
Those Joe Billings boys played their hearts out. They did. They deserve it.
And that, under old business, would you, would you tell them what we did today on the board of works, what we were gonna do with the bucket drives and stuff?
Yes, and Councilman Bishop would be aware of this because he called me late last week, but one of the organizations raising money through a bucket drive, and they were located in front of the fire station at Grand Avenue. Had some miners who were not supervised out in the intersection, and Councilman went by and saw that. And so, I'm going to prepare a resolution for the future when groups come before the Board of Public Works to get approval for these things, that there will be an understanding that there won't be any miners who are not supervised at all times, and that they will agree to that in writing as well.
So, you're gonna prepare the whole thing?
Yes.
The steps and all that?
Yes. And what, and then we can question them, of course, as they come up, each organization, the questions we might have about that. I guess I would have thought that would have gone without saying, that they wouldn't have miners out in the street, but apparently not, so we're gonna have to address that with each group.
My main concern was, in, in the whole situation, was just safety.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
And, and there's nothing personal involved in it, but when I saw it, I just, I mean, I did see one individual later on come over, but I thought it ought to be brought up, because if memory served me right, Daryl, didn't we used to have a sign-off sheet on that?
Well, we still do on the red, or the, the coming and picking up the cones and the vest. But nothing I recall on anything else about.
Yeah, we did. It's just been a long time ago, and it's no big deal, but I would just, it's just, down there at that fire station, it's just at the fire station there, that is one of the fastest places. If they hit that light green and come through there, they don't slow down, and when they didn't have what they needed, I just thought it should be brought to.
They did have their cones out, right?
Pardon me?
They did have their cones.
No, they did not have.
They did not?
That's what I told you on the phone when I called you.
They signed for them. They came to pick them up.
Well, if they were there, they were invisible. Because I, when I, when I made my donation, I asked a young man, where's your cone, where's your safety cone at, and I got a this. So, I'm just concerned about safety, that's personal.
Okay, we're going down to item six, mayor's update. Daryl, would you like to give the update on the paving?
Uh, yeah, sure. Waterloo's complete?
We accommodated stance on Saturday to accommodate them on, because they have so much track, truck traffic. We went, we jumped over to their area, did Mount Street, and in front, there's stance and roots. And, uh, today, we're working on, uh, Twenty-first Street. Uh, they did not complete it today. Doubtful they'll complete it tomorrow because it's supposed to rain, but.
It's gonna be nice.
It is gonna be nice, very nice. They're doing a fantastic job. Um, might also say that, uh, if anyone should get a complaint or a question, part of our grant process for all this, paving, was the fact that we have to have a representative there as an inspector. Okay? So, yes, you will see one of my men there, you will see him sitting in a truck, he's collecting the, the sheets and talking with the pavers and checking the depth, and he's doing exactly what he's supposed to do. But, just in case you would, you know, and he's gonna be jumping from spot to spot with the truck, but he is doing what he's supposed to do according to the grant rules. I can't stress that enough.
That's good enough.
Yeah.
Because if we don't do it right, then we could have to pay that money back.
We're not gonna do that.
No, we don't wanna do that.
But we did get one complaint, right, where he was standing around doing nothing, doing anything, so.
Yes.
That's the reason Daryl was bringing it up tonight, is let you know that if you get a complaint, that's why.
That's, that's, that's what it is.
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause I don't wanna come before you all and ask for additional to pay money back, man. No way. You got a tough time. Anything else?
Okay, I'll go on down to, thank you, Daryl. You got something?
Yes, I've got something. Um, on August seventh, we signed an additional appropriation for the Lloyd Special Distribution. This was not advertised correctly, so I am gonna have to advertise it again, and so this will be come voided ordinance. I also need to ask for the additional on the CCD fund for eighteen hundred dollars. That was to pay an engineering firm on, um, upcoming, um, Grand Avenue expenses, and then I will also be advertising for the Riverboat Minor Equipment for the twenty-six, eight fifty.
CCD stands for?
Community, uh, community, community capital development. Yeah, you go ahead and say that.
Okay, opened up the forum here for the public. Has anybody got to come up? Any accolades or complaints or whatever? Okay.
I know a lot of times we hear a lot of negative, and we see a lot of negative complaints about the guy sitting in a truck or whatever, not knowing how to grant money. Um, just been driving around looking. There's been some businesses really step up the plate here lately. Lindy's, I don't know if you've seen the Lindy's liquor right next to the fire station?
Yes.
That siding's gorgeous, and that's not cheap siding. Uh, they've done a wonderful job. I've got an invitation to come up to Sapa. I did a walk-through at Sapa Plant. They are spending a ton of money. They painted every piece of metal outside that building, every signpost, every, every, uh, guardrail, every, every machine outside that building got it painted. They're painting the inside, and they're all using all local people to do all their work. Um, they have some guys, they have the dust for dust control. I'm not for sure if those are local or not, I can't remember. Uh, but the painters are, I mean, they're really putting a lot of money cleaning up the facility. And I got, I spent about two hours just doing a walk-through of the facility with them, and that's just good for people to know, people see that businesses are really taking pride, they're starting to clean up, starting to make Connerville look good again, and I started driving around, it kinda opened my eyes, looked around to see what's going on. There's a lot of construction going on around town. It's a positive thing seeing people step up to the plate and to get some stuff done and clean Connerville up. And I think it's a great move, and sometimes it's easy to be a naysayer. I, I tend to, we tend to focus on the negative. But as you drive around and see what's going on, there's a lot of good going on in town, and there's a lot to be excited about. You know, I'd like to give kudos to Sapa and Lindy's, and I'm sorry if I missed someone, uh, but there's a lot happening right now.
The Eagles, they're putting a new sidewalk out front?
There you go.
You got that new restaurant opening up?
There was some that was put.
There's just a, a lot happening to be focused on.
And, and another thing, too, you know, a lot of the businesses, we don't get to them, and thanks for being in Connerville, but I would like to thank all the businesses. but I would like to thank all the businesses that are in town, uh, for, thank you for being here. I know we don't get to see them come and see you sometimes, but, uh, we do appreciate you having your business in town. And, uh, I've been trying to go around and visit some, so I'm gonna be doing that in the next few weeks. Uh, just telling people, thank you for being here. So if you guys get a chance, go into a business, thank them. Cause you know, they're, they're not the big multimillion dollar companies, but they do employ people and.
Yeah, I would encourage.
And the small ones.
I'd encourage council to do that. They have open arms too. I, I walk into a lot of businesses, partly cause I have that relationship with them already. And when I ask them, I'm like, you're the first person from the city, not, not, I'm not, city council-wise to ever come even talk to me. And they're shocked when we do it, and they, and they like it when we do it, so take an effort, just take one evening a week or one day, just go visit with them. Take a lunch break, whatever you gotta do.
We also have a new pharmacy going in too.
Georges.
Well, I, I, I've noticed too, I don't know if the police departments noticed, but I don't think we have quite as many high lawns as what, the lawns are better. I, there are still a couple, but I haven't noticed them as much, and the ones that we have mowed have kept them up.
It's dried down a little bit too, so it's not growing back.
True, but some of them, it wouldn't matter, but.
We continue to send along his letters almost on a daily basis.
Yeah.
And I also have a memo here that Jim Leverton called in, I don't know who they are, but he wanted to co, a compliment, a couple of city employees. I don't know who they are, but he wanted to tell them thank you. So I don't know if you know who they are. If not, tell them a resident called in, tell them thank you, so. Okay. Is there anything else come for the council? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second to adjourn? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Adjourn.